I'm gonna call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow.
Here.
And Councillor Pictionary.
I'm here, thank you.
Alright, we have two work session items tonight. The first one is the police special option levy renewal with Sam and then I'll turn it over to you, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you. Again, my name is Sam Kelly-Kwachoki, I'm the Legislative and Economic Development Analyst in the City Manager's Office. So I get to talk to you all tonight about the police special option levy renewal coming up. So I'm looking for guidance before coming back to you all in a couple of weeks for a public hearing and a formal adoption. This will give staff enough time to prep all the election material that's needed, make sure we're all in a row here. Briefly sort of the history of this levy, it started back in 2002. Every five years it expires for election again. The current levy expires June 30th, 2023, so we're hoping for November 8th election in '22, so not too far away. Currently, the levy funds a variety of really key police services, so this includes 20 FTE in police services, so eight officers, five dispatchers, five community service officers, and then two records and retention folks, about $450,000 MNS to go with them. It also completely funds our jail, so it's 19 FTE and about a million dollars MNS. Our courts have a big chunk of this as well, two and two-thirds FTE, so two of that is clerks, and then .23 of a judge, and then a little bit of prosecutors offices in here as well. So this is a pretty all encompassing essential fund for the city. At this time, staff has come forward with a recommendation to renew it at the current rate it is, so $1.40 per $1,000 of assessed. What this does, it offers a variety of things. The first is by keeping it flat and for substantial the same resources, we can use the word renewal. And that word has been pretty big to show that renewals are easier to vote for, to pass, rather than a new levy, a new tax, whatever. As you saw a couple of weeks ago with DHM and their research, we only tested $1.40 renewal, and the results came back mostly positive, but maybe not positive enough for an increase for new services, but rather keeping this levy flat and the way to do it that way. And then lastly, in talking with partners in finance, the fund can hold on a five-year forecast out of straight renewal. The fifth year does get down below ideal levels, but in talking with them, the current forecasts generally have overspending, especially in personnel services when you look out that way. Because as you know, police aren't fully staffed right now, there'll be some savings in there that make that fifth-year forecast not entirely clear, but the first four are still showing positive outcome. So with that in mind, I tried to do a quick overview, I think most we want to do is have this half an hour discussion feedback and get on the same page before I come back in a couple of weeks, that all important resolution. So I think with that, I'm able to turn it back to you all. Happy to answer any questions. I also have some folks on standby here, so please, if I don't know the answer, I know one of them will, I'm just the pretty face of all this for now.
Leonard.
So are we at the place where we're going to be talking about the actual wording of the caption and the question and the summary yet?
Thank you, I knew I forgot something. Yeah, one of the attachments includes sort of the current working draft of that language. I want to include that for you all feedback, and in case folks hadn't seen this before. But this has the 10-word limit on the caption, the question, and the summary. I tried to include the rules from the election office in there as well, in brackets, just so we knew what our constraints were.
If we are at the place where we can start talking about that, I have no, the caption and the question seem pretty straightforward. In the summary, I remember in the previous discussion, we had a figure in the packet that said the levy would represent a cost of blank for the average taxpayer. And it seems like that would be helpful. I mean, people don't generally think in terms of $1.40 per $1,000 or in terms of percentages, it's a, you know, it's a lot of arithmetic, and it would be even very helpful, I think, for most people if they would just get some sort of some sort of figure to get their head around.
Excellent, that's a great idea, thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Corey.
Thank you. So mine is kind of a question and kind of just sort of a messy convers- chat. So one, I totally appreciate the thinking behind, you know, keeping it flat, calling it a renewal, all of that, and understand the message, the sort of historical messaging of that. One of the things I've been thinking about since we started to talk about this the last time is, you know, we're working hard to kind of invest in and reimagine and work on our police department. And so those two messages are kind of different to me. The like the renewal and we're gonna just keep things the same and we're gonna continue to fund the same thing doesn't really tell the story of the fact that it's gonna cost money, and it's gonna cost effort for us to continue to invest in the police department. So I don't, I'm not necessarily advocating for us not making it a renewal, I'm just like just holding that in the messiness of my head of thinking like, how do we, how do we continue to talk to the community about the fact that we are focused on this? We are investing in this, things like body cameras and actually fully staffing our police department and paying for training and all that stuff is gonna cost money, which is beyond what we have done historically in terms of let's just fund jail beds. So that's where I'm sitting in terms of, I don't want to mess it up and say we're gonna talk about raising a bazillion dollars and make it impossible to fund what we need to fund, but I also want to like tell this just authentic conversation about what we're trying to do in Springfield with our policing.
So I think there's a couple of good points there, and one of the things that is gonna help with that is that as we sort of get into this, historically, you know, one or two of the councillors has sat in, you know, participated with the PAC and crafting the messaging around that, and I think that's where the opportunity to really tell and pull on that full story comes into is when, you know, whenever the the community group organizes to have somebody, you know, one or two people from the council sit on that and help guide that, you know, so that they can talk about this with the community. Merrily.
Yes, I agree. I think, I think the information we got from the polling that was done gives us a positive response towards the renewal of this levy. And I think also, we went through the Budget Committee without any major alarm as to the finances that were set up for the budget for the police department. They both, both of these are funding that goes towards the department. I think what's important to remember is that we have to show our department that we support them at the same time that we're trying to get them in a position of being able to grow and grow in the training and everything else, but I think in order to do that, I think we have to have a positive message to our department as well. So I just think, I think the funding is critical. And I think the way that this is set up, being separate, to take care of the things that the levy takes care of, to take care of the things that are in the budget to take care of, I think that I'm comfortable with the way that it is.
Alright, other questions? So Sam, when you bring this back for a public hearing before we approve it, will we still have an opportunity to modify the text? I think like Leonard's got a really great idea about putting that cost in there, and I know we're limited to like 175 words, so there may be some massaging at the last minute.
Yeah, I believe you all still can, like any resolution, I think we can, we can make those changes. I don't it'd be a problem. Maybe Christina might want to jump in there.
Yes, you can make changes before it's adopted, and there are also probably some legal requirements around wording that we will have to probably adjust before we bring it to you. In addition to the word limits, there are other statutorily required language that needs to appear there as well.
Okay, Joe.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you, Christina. It was actually kind of stole what was gonna come out of my mouth, or probably more appropriately out of your mouth. It's the last several levies historically, I brought that same thing up. The last three levies in a row in regards to the wording and how a success will people have a better understanding. So Leonard, I know where you're coming from, but it's almost like one of those been there, done that's, but hopefully we can do something different, but and I think it's, it would be valuable information for someone to, and I think we did word one levy, one levy once, I believe, I can't remember which one, in regards to if your home is valued at 100, and I think the number we used at the time was $140,000, it would cost you this much per year. And then that kind of had to go away because of the words, it took out more words than what the wording had to require, you know, had to have in it. So it was like extra wording that would be at the forsake words that were required to be in it, so we didn't have room, but, but I agree Leonard, if we can squeeze that in there and still be legal, great, but I'm not holding my breath on that one.
Alright, anybody else? Steve.
When we did this, originally built the jail and the levy, we were pretty, pretty happy here in Springfield, successfully. I'm not here. We were pretty, we were pretty happy with the success of it. It's been so quiet. Lately, I hear people sort of saying, we don't need the jail, let's turn in the library, new library. I didn't know what to say, but as I see the numbers here, property crimes dropped by 50%, and person crimes at 31%, I'd forgotten that. That's a big deal, and, and I'm glad we're able to do that in our city.
Yeah, so the, and I was just happened to have an aunt visiting today, and the corner that Planktown is on, crime rate has dropped 90% from when we built the jail, right? Like to, so what we see downtown has been, you know, the, the police levy has been a big part of that. Alright, any other questions? I do know that there is some interest among the council to talk about sort of mental health services. I think it's, you know, I think there's a solid discussion around that, it's just a little bit early to make it into the police levy. We've got some work session time scheduled in the fall to talk about, you know, a drug or a treatment court and what that might look like. So I want to just sort of acknowledge for both the public and, you know, the rest of the council that it is coming. There is gonna be a good conversation about mental health coming, it's just gonna take some time to get it scheduled and, and work through it the correct way.
Would that be two separate courts, Drug Treatment Court and a Mental Health Court?
Well, I think, I think the, I think the staff's gotta put together the packet of information and, you know, and bring it all back and bring it all back in the fall.
Alright.
Alright, Sam, do you need anything else?
No, it's not like we're good with $1.40, so I can use that number for now, and then we'll, we can workshop some language in a couple of weeks if we need to. Thank you.
Alright, I appreciate it, thank you. Alright, item number two, Main Street Facility Plan with Molly. And we got the whole cast and crew here.
We do, we have some people live, some people on the screen. Good evening. I'm Molly Markarian, Senior Planner and the City's Project Manager for the Main Street Safety Project. You all, I'm sure, recall that this is a collaborative effort with ODOT, and so tonight we also have ODOT's Project Manager Bill Johnston, as well as Amanda Salier, who is ODOT's Region 2 Traffic Investigations Engineer. I also have a number of project team members with me tonight, Brian Barnett, the City's Traffic Engineer, Michael Liebler, the City's Transportation Planning Engineer, Emma Newman, Senior Transportation Planner, and Laura Lynn Spiro, DPW Communications Coordinator.
So Molly, before you get, while you're getting organized, just a couple, I think a couple of things to, to, to discuss about this. This is work session number one of four as we go through this, and Merrily and I sit on there, sit on the sort of Governance Committee and provide some steering and oversight for this. As we talked about it, we set these up to strictly just start to get into the information, get people re-grounded with the material and give them an opportunity to ask some questions. So please make sure you ask, you know, any questions that you have. It was designed to sort of be an open discussion. Some of the material, since it's back-to-back over the next month, is gonna, it may take two weeks before people get an answer, but, but the staff's gonna log them and get it, make sure we get an answer to all of this. Merrily, did I miss anything from our talks about it?
The only thing that, the only thing, and I'm sure Molly's gonna, gonna cover this, is our basic goal for tonight is for the council to get a real good, deep understanding of the foundation of what, of what all this is. And to, so ask any questions that you have, for to clarify the foundation and the basic grounding of how the Main Street project even came about.
Yeah. Perfect. Alright, Molly, take us away.
Okay, so as the mayor said, we're gonna start with how we got here and where we're headed. And then we'll review information coming out of Chapter 2 of the draft facility plan that was included in your packet. And we'll make sure to pause after each section to take questions. And then at the end, we're looking also for your feedback on the discussion questions that were included in the packet. So on the screen is a sampling of headlines we saw in the years leading up to the initiation of this project, and we continue to see headlines like this year after year. I feel terrible reading headlines like this. I'm sure you don't like how reading headlines like this feels anymore than I do. So the City Council directed staff, starting in 2011, to pursue actions to improve safety on Main Street. In 2012, ODOT completed the Main Street Safety Study that focused on mitigating pedestrian collisions on Main Street. In response to that study, ODOT funded seven enhanced pedestrian crossings on Main Street, and we'll cover those a little bit more in a bit. The city has also been actively involved in public education and outreach efforts. As I mentioned, the city and ODOT have been working collaboratively to make safety upgrades on Main Street. And although these changes have helped improve safety on Main Street, as we'll talk about more later tonight, the safety concerns identified for Main Street require a comprehensive solution beyond isolated, low-cost treatments to significantly reduce the risk of crashes for all road users. If you recall, back in 2016, ODOT allocated $4.5 million through the Arts Program, All Roads Transportation Safety, to address safety concerns on Main Street. At that time, Main Street was identified as a very high-crash street with several sections in the worst 5% to 10% of similar ODOT roads in Region 2 of Oregon. The recommended solution initially was to install a raised median on Main Street, recognizing that the crash types common for Main Street are spread along the street and are associated with the characteristics of the corridor. ODOT and the city subsequently decided to prepare a facility plan first to develop a more comprehensive and integrated solution. In the fall of 2016, the City Council at that time determined that the city should address the safety problem on Main Street and supported moving forward with the study of safety medians, directing staff to investigate a suitable application for safety medians on Main Street, evaluate the impacts to fronting business and property owners, and coordinate engagement with the Maine-McBay Transit Study. At that time, the City Council saw the facility plan process as an opportunity to get to a decision about which major features the community and the City Council could support being included in a long-term concept for Main Street. Since 2018, Springfield and ODOT have been working with partner agencies and a broad range of community members to develop the Main Street Facility Plan. At the December 6, 2021 work session, the City Council directed staff to move the draft plan into the adoption stage. On February 15th earlier this year, the Planning Commission held a duly noticed public hearing on a package of legislative amendments associated with the draft facility plan. On April 5th earlier this year, after reviewing the staff report, evidence in the record, public testimony, the Planning Commission ordered a recommendation of approval be forwarded to the City Council for their consideration by a vote of 4 to 3. Later that month, in consideration of the amount of public comment and the size of the supporting materials of the draft plan, the mayor and the City Council determined that more time was needed to read and consume the material associated with the draft facility plan, including the recommendations, before making such a significant decision for Springfield's Main Street. So I can pause there and see if there are any questions, or are there just two more slides for kind of where we're headed next with these work sessions and then the summer and the fall. Let me know what works for folks.
Does anybody have any?
No, just keep going.
Yep, I'm getting the sign, keep on rolling, Molly.
Okay. So as the mayor mentioned earlier tonight, this is the first of four scheduled work sessions to dive more in-depth into the draft plan. Attachment 1 in your packet is a guide to the draft facility plan to give you a sense of the scope of the draft plan. And the focus for tonight is on, as we mentioned, how we got here, where we're headed, the Main Street needs, the safety data, the needs of the business community, and the draft purpose statement. And then depending on how things evolve, moving into community engagement that has occurred throughout the planning process to date and the development of solutions, followed by the draft recommendation and the, and the recommendation for the process for implementing the plan. So where we are headed after these four work sessions in June, staff will prepare a communication packet memo with links to all of the supplemental materials that support the draft facility plan, as well as the feedback from the community to date, not only leading up to the draft facility plan, but including community feedback during the Planning Commission hearing and all of the feedback that we've heard from the community that has been going to the council since the Planning Commission and continuing forward. And then we, our staff team will be identifying possible plan modifications and circling back with the City Council this fall to get direction on the development of a City Council alternative plan that we would then have a public hearing on that, and the Planning Commission recommendation in early 2023. So again, pause and let me know if there are any questions on any of that procedural stuff.
Molly, could you spend a little bit of time and just talk about what is a facility plan?
Okay. So the facility plan pulls together all of the work that has been done over the last four years in terms of the development, well, first of all, the, the goals and objectives that the community identified, the values that led into the goals and objectives. And then it describes the development of the recommended solutions and the process that we went through for that, and then it identifies how implementation of those solutions would work. And I think that's an area that we've heard definitely in the, in most recent months, that people are looking for more details in that regard. But essentially, it's like the roundup of all of this body of work that has been done over the last few years.
Alright, great. I think you can keep on going, I'm seeing head nods around the table here.
Okay. So transitioning into that Main Street Needs Chapter, Chapter 2 of the Draft Facility Plan, our project team developed a set of goals and objectives for the facility plan in consideration of community input, also looking back to the City's Transportation System Plan and prior corridor studies. These goals and objectives were used throughout the process as a filter for our analysis, and that Main Street Needs Chapter is organized by those goals, so that's why I mention it, and we'll go through each goal one by one. So the first goal is safety. It was identified by the Planning Commission, the City Council, the Governance Team as the primary purpose for the Main Street Safety Project to improve safety for all users. Community outreach combined with detailed technical analysis helped provide groundwork for understanding the transportation needs for Main Street, both now and then looking into the future, by 20 years into the future. If you recall, the initial safety evaluation of existing conditions was based on the most recent five years of crash data available at the time of that evaluation, which covered 2012 to 2016. In September of 2019, our project team prepared Addendum Number 1, which evaluated 2017 crash data and partial crash data for 2018 and 2019. And the takeaway from that first addendum is that similar trends and patterns existed as in the 2012 to 2016 data. Leading up to and including the Planning Commission public hearing, we heard a lot of desire to see a data set that would reflect the updated conditions on Main Street, including the reduction in the posted speed limit on Main Street, as well as the installation of the enhanced pedestrian crossings. So we prepared a second addendum that included 2018, well, 2017, 2018, 2019 data. And then compared that to the 2012 to 2016 data to determine whether there were notable changes in travel patterns on Main Street. I just would like to note that as it relates to 2020, the addendum presented the 2020 crash data corridor, crash data for the corridor more anecdotally because it is strongly influenced by changes in travel patterns associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, and thus would not be useful for guiding crash mitigation decisions. Statewide, traffic safety has gotten worse in recent years. Instead of getting worse, Main Street continues to see people dying and being injured in traffic crashes at about the same level. This leveling off of traffic crashes compared to statewide trends is likely due to the various efforts to improve safety actions on Main Street, like we talked about earlier. However, people are still dying and being seriously harmed year after year on the Main Street corridor. This slide in particular compares crash data from the initial data set of 2012 to 2016 to the more recent set of 2017 to 2019. I'd like to note the percentage of crash types remaining consistent except for PDO, which is property damage only, between the data sets. I'd also like to note that in 2018, the minimum damage dollar value for reporting a crash increased, and so fewer crashes have been legally required to be reported since 2018. Again, an important takeaway from looking at the more recent crash data and comparing it to the, to the older crash data is that although the overall reported crash frequency has decreased is that although the overall reported crash frequency has decreased in recent years, the number of crashes resulting in injury or death have remained consistent through 2019, while, as we just talked about, the number of property damage only crashes is lower. Again, that addendum two to the crash analysis tells us that while the city and ODOT have completed lower cost and less impactful updates, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Do you want me to go back?
Merrily.
We're still there. Let me ask, ask the question in regards to the data regarding the crash frequency and the percentages. Does that reflect, is that percentage attained through reflecting the increase in traffic? Because we, in that period of time, we've increased population and we've increased traffic on Main Street. Did those percentages reflect the, that increase in traffic?
So I would venture to say yes, but I'm going to look to someone else on my team to answer for sure.
I'd be happy to respond. This is Brian Burnett. The data that's on the slide on the screen currently is crashes per year. And so it does not reflect any changes in the volume of traffic flow during those time periods.
Okay. Okay. So those are, so the percentages, just average crashes per year. So and I, and I'm, I'm trying to be objective here, but in a roundabout way, we could actually be having a lesser percentage if we, if we compared it to increased amount of traffic.
We could indeed be having a lower rate of crashes now than before if the traffic volumes had a material increase over that time period.
Right. If they significantly increased. And I don't know whether they did or not. It was just a question that popped into my mind.
Yes, you're, you're correct. That would be a question that we could answer at a later date when we could look for that data to support or refute that possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Steve.
I believe I read in here 20,000 vehicles per day average on there, and that seems awfully low. Dave, did I remember that correctly?
I can neither confirm nor deny. I, I honestly don't recall what the figure was.
Like it would be higher than that, but I.
I would think so too.
Somehow it 20,000 sort of jumped at me. That the database for this, is there, is there a uniform database that, that is being accessed for this or accessed for this information? Or are there, I've sort of heard some talk, there may be some other, others that could skew the information.
Yes, there is a uniformed database other than that property damage only reporting threshold.
Okay.
Oregon is a self-reporting crash state, so there's not a police report that generates the data. It's individual drivers reporting the data.
Okay.
But there is a solid mechanism in place to manage that data once submitted by the public.
Good, thank you.
So I've got another data question here. So if you look at the data sets, one goes from 2012 to 2016, then there was an addendum that's from 2017 to 2019. And we know that 2020 is probably not going to ever be sort of measured, right? So in a facility plan, is there someplace written in the plan that is requiring either ODOT or the city or some combination to constantly refresh the data either through a new traffic study, publish new results to see, sees whatever impact we're doing, whether or not it's benefiting the safety picture?
Well, I think that we can look at that two ways. One is that the, the funding mechanisms that are likely to be directed toward this always are going to be looking at benefit cost ratio. And in so doing, they are looking at what is the past trend recently? Or I should say, what is the trend in that particular segment of interest? And is it, how does it compare to all other segments in the city, others, other locations with similar street types? And then when there's a mitigation that's identified, that mitigation is valued or costed, and then the value of the crash reduction is offset against that. And that's how that ratio is determined. So everybody competes on that same basis.
All right, thank you. All right, Molly, I'm not seeing any more questions for right now, so we can keep going.
Okay. So just to sum up this slide, the higher severity crashes that the Main Street Safety Project aims to prevent are still occurring. In fact, we are persistently seeing four to five crashes per year that result in people dying or being incapacitated while traveling on Main Street. And so then moving into what does that, what does that mean? On the first slide about the data, we had like injury A, B, C. And so that correlates into terms that we, we hope are easier to understand into serious, minor and possible injuries. And so we know that the lives of those in a crash are always altered and it's just a matter of degrees. And so when we talk about serious injuries, those are the injury A. They prevent the injured person from walking, driving, or normally continuing activities they were capable of before the injury was occurred. And all of these definitions are according to the, the model minimum uniform crash criteria. So it's kind of like a national way that these are talked about. We also know that a dollar figure does not truly capture the intangible cost of a crash, but we do use it in terms of analysis to determine the cost effectiveness. So comparing the cost of possible improvements compared to the cost of a particular type of crash. And in Oregon, serious injury and fatal crashes are both estimated to have a societal cost of close to 1.5 million dollars because both are considered life-altering results of a collision. And again, there's a federal highway source for those dollar figures. As we mentioned earlier, the crash frequency on Main Street has decreased in recent years, but the most predominant crash types have remained consistent. And those are rear end and turning movement crashes that represent approximately 70 to 80% of crashes on Main Street, which is common on corridors with a high number of driveways and intersections. And kind of corollary to that is that streets with a high number of conflict points have these crash types. And so when we compare Main Street to other state highways, Springfield is the highest in terms of driveway density. In general, from the data, we have not seen significant trends related to weather, pavement or lighting conditions at the time that crashes occurred. 13 to 14% of crashes did occur in dark conditions without streetlights present or functioning. And that was similar for fatal crashes. Excess, excessive speed and distraction contributed to approximately 10% of all crashes, but were involved in a small proportion of severe and fatal injury crashes. And according to the crash data in police reports, impairment of drugs or alcohol contributed to just over 5% of total crashes on Main Street, but 12.5% of fatal or severe injury crashes. Lusters. Yep.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Molly, you mentioned the level of intoxication on the crashes and whatnot. So then what percentage of crashes were handled by the police over all crashes? And so that would interest me in the sense of we're trying to make a declaration of only 14% of the accidents were alcohol or intoxication related, but yet we know that the vast majority of the accidents that reported did not involve the police. Is that correct?
Brian?
We don't have figures on when the police were or were not involved. We're using a database that's strictly self-reported. In terms of whether or not the, the police were involved, if there's a suspicion of, of impairment, I'm quite sure that they would have been involved. Typically because, well, let me, let me, let me state it this way. Usually the police department is called concerning crashes. Unless the two parties who are involved want to just handle it themselves or it's a non-blocking kind of inner crash. But we don't have data specifically on whether police were involved or not involved. Is there another way that we could get at the impairment question you're posing?
Well, I think actually that, I don't think that type of statement can even be made because I don't think you have a basis for that statement, other than the fact that there's some we know were investigated by the police. But the vast majority of accidents were not investigated by the police. And you're also asserting that people involved in accident may be able to identify somebody that's intoxicated when really in fact, it's, it's quite an art unless they're absolutely sloppy drunk or sloppy intoxicated. So it's, it's, I just want to be able to keep things, you know, on equal plane and not make some guesses here because the public doesn't want any guessing going on.
I respect that. The, the data that Molly has on the chart there is the data that we have available to us. And that's the best interpretation we can make.
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree. I'm, I'm not going to say that that is not information that you have available, but I'm just questioning the validity of that information, whether or not that should even be included because it's an unknown factor, except for the, the data that you provided, which in my mind can't be validated.
If I could jump in for a second, Brian?
Oh yeah, please, yeah.
I think that specifically as it relates, I mean, I hear what you're saying about the, like the pool of, of data. I think specifically as it relates to the fatal or severe injury cases, which was 12.5%. I think there we, we can make the leap that police were involved.
Oh yeah, I can, I totally agree with that statement for sure. Because it's gonna, there's, if there's gonna be a serious injury or fatal, for sure, the police are gonna be involved. So I think it just may be the worrying of, you know, of those crashes or of those significant crashes, this is how many we know involved and intoxicated. But then I think to put that in perspective, we probably should put what percentage involved a distraction or impairment overall.
Yeah.
If that, is that? So it keeps it kind of in context. But I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
And before we go to Merrily, could you guys maybe clarify a point there? So when, when you look at the entire data set, are, are the intoxicated or impaired crashes, are those all coming? Or is that all coming from police reports or is that, or is there some self-reported data that, that is in there? So some people report, say, reporting, hey, look, we had a crash and there was alcohol involved? Or is that set only specifically the ones where the police responded and then investigated?
I'd like to direct that question to Amanda Salier of ODOT. She's the expert on that ODOT data.
Do we have Amanda? Oh.
We should.
All right, we're pausing just for a second because we are bringing Amanda up.
Hi. Was delayed a little bit. I'm Amanda from the Oregon Department of Transportation. So regarding, I, I have a couple of comments for you. I think there are instances where people will put on the report that they suspect, if it's self-reported, that they suspect that the other participant, or they might admit that they were somewhat impaired. But it, what happens is they compare the two reports to each other and they only, as far as I know, they only input the data that is the same or not contradicting from the both, from both reports on self-reported reports. It's safe to assume that injury B or the, the moderate injury, severe and fatal have some level of police involvement because they have to confirm those injury levels to some extent. So, so that's, and there's a lot more investigation that goes into those injury types as well. That's just so they can confirm in case there's any litigation or insurance problems. So I definitely think it's safe to assume it's grossly under-reported for injury C and P D O. Distracted driving included in that.
All right. Thank you, Amanda. Merrily.
I'm looking at the bar graph and I'm trying to understand the purpose of it because the percentages don't line up with being 100% of crashes. So I'm trying to figure out what what else causes an accident and how come the percentages are so low in comparison to if you were dealing with 100% of crashes? Why, I'm losing my bar graph.
Oh, sorry. I was going back to the, to there.
You know, sometimes, sometimes I feel like we're talking apples and oranges. And, and we're looking at the bar graph and we're saying that this, this is impairment, this is speeding, this is rear end, you know, that kind of thing. This is, and, and distraction. And then we're not talking, you know, even if you talked about the cause of the accident, it, you know, it doesn't necessarily line up with excessive speed or just this particular bar graph with the one that you were almost on a couple of seconds ago, they don't line up together somehow. I, they just, I don't know. I, I'm having difficulty understanding the reasoning behind, I guess, behind the bar graph.
Molly, would you like me to take that one?
Sure.
Th- this bar graph is intended to be responsive to input we receive from the community. When they ask questions about what about these factors, this is the answer to those questions. The previous bar graph that Molly was going to while you're concluding your question is the one that identifies 100% of all types of crashes and what those might be.
The horizontal one. Yeah. I just, I just was looking at this one. And to me, like I said, to me, the percentages are very low. If you're talking that excessive speed was only 4.3% of all crashes, that's very low. And if you add all this up, it's very low in comparison to all crashes. So I was, I was, I, my head's still not around it, but I'm, I'm willing to keep listening.
Yeah, I can't read that bar chart from here, but I'm thinking that there is a chart that has failure to yield and improper turn. And those are the principal causes of, and following too close are the, are the root causes for the different crash types that we have. If we have that chart, Molly, would you?
Taken it out of our slideshow, but we can put it in for other ones. It, it usually followed this and where we would then talk about the primary causes of crashes, like you said, are, are following too closely and failure to yield right away.
This, this, this one makes more sense because at least it, it includes all of them. The other one just kind of, I, I, like I said, I couldn't get my head around it because I couldn't, I couldn't conceive of a purpose of just looking at those few things. But if it was in response to community questions and that was set up for them, that's fine.
All right, Leonard.
So is it possible that in this bar chart that we were just on, that the impairment and the distraction and the excessive speed were based on citations that were issued at the accident? I mean, it seems like you're, the categories that Brian brought up, failure to yield, improper lane change, improper turn, following too closely, those are all things that would also be cited. But if you were given one of those, one of those tickets, that, that, that's a separate offense, right? I mean, excessive speed, you, you would be given a ticket for speeding and for improper lane change. I mean, it's both.
Yeah, the, the standard form that the police use for their motor vehicle crash report has root causes of these nature. I don't know if that's the term they use, but it is the root cause of the accident. It does not necessarily mean though that a citation was issued toward that. It's just simply an identification of what the issue was that created the crash.
Okay.
Anything happens, first thing we do is call 911. Then it begins to get filtered down to the police and the police determine dispatch or whatever. Somehow officers are dispatched or they can't be dispatched because they're busy. So there's, there's some area in there that I think information, we're not getting information because it's not available under the circumstances.
And I think that's, I think that's a good point. I think we're ready to keep going.
Clusters of crashes are observed near major intersections and areas with high access density as well as areas with increased multimodal demand. I think the takeaway from, from this is that the safety problem on Main Street is corridor-wide systemic. In any given few years of data, specific crashes and locations of safety probability do shift around, however, the problem remains on Main Street. So this is kind of the end of the safety goal data. And so I'm going to move into business, community needs, unless you have any questions on these last two slides.
So I guess if you walk back to where the data is, right, the, the last conclusion you said is the inference that we're making is that the entire corridor is equally unsafe. And I don't know that when I read through the packet, should I, should we be concluding that the entire corridors equally unsafe? Or are you saying, hey, there's probably hotspots in the corridor that are more unsafe than others? And some, in some parts of the corridor that the data says are, I'm going to use relatively safe, more, more safe than the hotspots.
Yeah, I mean, and Brian can answer more on this too, but the, the way I see it is that there are, there are hotspots, but those hotspots move around over time. And so over the course of time, the whole corridor experiences problems.
Yes, I, I, I think there's an additional way to look at this is that we have intersections and we have segments. They have very different crash characteristics. The intersections are going to be more consistent than the segments will be in terms of what their crash rates are and how they shift over time, if any. The segments are going to be more variation there, simply because the crashes of that nature are typically associated with driveway accesses or street accesses to the, to the highway or to Main Street. The sorry, the train left the tracks there for a moment. Oh, I was looking at data that Amanda sent, I think just this morning. Or at least I got to this morning. And it was looking at the different time periods of our data. And what was apparent to me is that the overall crash numbers, because I don't have rates, I have frequencies. So number crashes per year or per a three-year time period were relatively consistent, although the segments that they occurred with shifted. The data is analyzed on segments of about a tenth of a mile each. And so those, those segments are looked at as you go down the whole five-mile section of roadway. And the, the segments that have the most crashes shift. And so we have basically two, the early data set and the later data set. And although there is some shift in that, there's consistency. There's consistency in the numbers overall, there's shift in the location between those two data sets. So that is why I believe Molly is saying we have consistency in that although there is differences, those, those differences shift along length. And to your earlier point, yes, there are some areas of the corridor that are more generally have a lower crash frequency than other areas that have higher crash frequency. And that relationship is fairly consistent, but there's still lateral shift, if you will.
And if, Merrily.
This, this is a community-oriented question in regards to looking at this and, and hearing the, the shifting of hotspots. Questions that I've been asked in regards to this specific part is how then unless you completely inhibit things going on on Main Street, how do you play whack-a-mole, basically? If you've got a hotspot here this year and you've got a hotspot someplace else next year, and it, it, it's in rel, in relationship and relevance to what exists on Main Street for residential development, for commercial, for businesses and all that. How do you not end up playing whack-a-mole, trying to fix everything? And that's, that's a question that I'm, that I have been asked lots of times in the community in regards to this, especially when they hear that that hotspots move and, and concerns different areas of crashes move. How do you get from what the goals were established in the beginning? How does that relate to a, where we're headed in a, in a plan? And make it so that it is relevant and in consideration of everybody on Main Street.
Sure, the, the very nature of crash mitigation actions is going to be seeking out that which is worse and mitigating it. You can, you can, once that is done, then of course you have some success there in terms of crash mitigation. And then there's going to be a new spot that rises to that top. As I described earlier, the, the benefit cost analysis is done on allocating very scarce safety resource money to the places where you get the highest benefit at the least cost. So there is always this aspect of, we're gonna, we would, we and ODOT, the funding source, would be looking for the most cost-effective places to expend the money. Is that going to be in the highest crash locations? Not always. It could be in a lower than high crash location because the benefit relative to the cost is higher. Maybe that really high crash location is very expensive to mitigate. So again, we're always looking to allocate these resources in the most cost-effective manner. And so there is going to be that need to be flexible in where those funds go. Always with the goal of reducing the severe and fatal injury crashes.
Any other questions? All right, let's keep going.
As Counselor Woodrow just talked about, we know that businesses on Main Street are an integral part of the community and people are concerned about them. These are their livelihoods and they are concerned about how this project will affect their lives. You're hearing their concerns about how customers and freight and emergency medical services will access their businesses. You're hearing concerns about how they're scared about losing part or all of their building or their property. And that their employees lose their jobs. And so that's why we also have this goal guiding us in the development of this plan to support the viability of existing and future businesses. Early in the process, our team gathered information about the businesses on the corridor at that time. Our team included consultants Echo Northwest and they used quarterly census employment and wages data to get a sense of the businesses that would likely be impacted by accessibility from Main Street. So those in the, the larger quarter-mile buffer and those businesses that would be most likely impacted by visibility from Main Street, and that's the 500 foot buffer. Concerns related to site usage and access for specific locations received from adjacent business and property owners during both the Maine-McBay Transit Study and the Main Street Safety Project have been documented in an online map for us to consider as we developed the recommendations. Many comments have centered around concerns regarding potential right-of-way impacts on adjacent properties and businesses. The impact of construction on adjacent business and properties, potential impacts to business signage and the ability of customers and deliveries to access businesses. Throughout this process, we've acknowledged that changes is scary and that we won't know everything for sure about future implementation impacts, but we wanted to better understand potential impacts to possible street changes on businesses and property owners. And so our team, with the help of Echo Northwest, early on reviewed studies regarding the economic impact of possible street elements on businesses or changes to street elements on businesses. Those focused on studies with best practices in research, which are well-designed studies controlling for a wide range of factors influencing business performance. We learned that few studies attempt to measure the effect of roadway changes on retail sales and business performance because those are difficult and expensive to perform. And while no studies exactly replicate the conditions on Main Street, some, some similar patterns did emerge that businesses, no business clearly in these studies declined because of a street project. There was a takeaway that any effect on a business after a street project was less than during construction. And so it's really important that steps are taken to reduce decline during construction. We also learned that when raised medians are installed, customers tend to be more tolerant of some additional time that it may take to access businesses for destination businesses. But for pass-by businesses, they may experience some loss of patronage associated with the added time it takes to access their property. And also that mid-block businesses tend to be more susceptible to lower customer visitation. So I will pause there if there are questions on the, the business needs section.
Steve.
A lot of those businesses are smaller businesses. And the owners have built years trying to build, build their business and their clientele. They're very, very sensitive to it. The fear of something affecting that in the future. So we have to be very careful that we, that we whatever we're going to do makes better. I do have one other question here. And that is, and I go through this document, I run into questions. Freight, I don't know if this is relative or not, freight deliveries currently use the center lane to stage delivery. While this may convenient, it's not permitted. Anyway, alternate staging and delivery options could include deploying smaller vehicles for the last mile of delivery using adjusted travel lanes. In other words, truck pulls up, you unload it, you unload it down another truck, that truck drives down, they unload it there. Pretty crazy, especially for a small business. So that was, that's my thought when I read that.
Okay, yeah, that's gonna go. Like, that's a part that, yeah, you, I worked for eight long enough. All right, Leonard.
Yeah, so on this mid-block business, there are going to be some medians, I mean, as currently proposed, that are going to be longer than a block, right? I mean, so, some of these medians are not going to cut off every block. Am I right about that?
Brian, can you address that? But I, I mean, if they're going to be breaks at all of the major intersections and then all street intersections.
Yeah, our, our, our expectation was that all public streets, with very rare exception, would be open for full access. The major private access points that have high volumes of traffic, oftentimes higher than what a public street might carry, those would be open for some, either a left-in or full access.
Okay, now, now when you say a major intersection, are you talking about like 28th, 42nd, 54th, or are you talking about every block?
Every public street with the rare exception.
Okay, that's different from what I was thinking. Thanks.
All right, Joe, and then we'll get to Cory.
Thank you. So the mid-block businesses are more susceptible to lower customer visitation resulting from access restrictions. So is that, I'm still sitting here just a little confused. Leonard, Counselor Steer just asked about breaks in the median that's, that I thought at one point where like was going to be a solid median between roundabouts, pretty much solid. And now I'm hearing now that there all your side streets will be able, people will be able to pull off a Main Street. And for example, eastbound traffic on Main Street will be able to turn northbound onto a side street with the current plan? Or is that changed? What, I, I'm really confused.
That was our intent all along. Public streets would have full access with rare exception.
So where in the heck did I get the medians all the way down where there's no access to side streets? My goodness, okay. Well, thank you. That's helpful. Although I, I'm concerned. So if the side streets are all, have full access, then why would, I guess the mid-block would be between those side streets? So on that modification of Main Street, are any of these modifications going to be, the cost would be borne by any landowner? Do we know that yet?
That's a good question that I'm pondering. I, I would think it'd be highly unlikely, but I am not an expert in the land use area, so I, you know, the land use permitting process, so I think I'll defer that.
So Christina, I saw, just saw you pop in. Can you help us with that one?
Yes, I am happy to answer that question. So if a property owner redevelops their property in a way that creates additional impact on the city's transportation system. So in, you know, intensification of a use, then they may be required to bring the frontage of their property up to whatever the currently adopted standards are. And that's the situation in which a property owner would bear the cost. Absent the council adopting a local improvement district to assess properties individually, which has not, I think, been proposed as, at any point as part of the Main Street facility plan. But Molly could correct me if I'm wrong on that. That would have to be adopted by the council. There's a significant public notice process that goes along with an LID. Otherwise, the extent to which a property owner must dedicate property or dedicate new right-of-way is constrained by constitutional requirements around eminent, eminent domain. So even in the case where someone is redeveloping and having to dedicate more right-of-way, it has to be proportional to the impact of their development on the community. And so it's what doesn't need to be proportional is to the extent there's already property dedicated for the right-of-way. Any requirement to improve that up to current standards, like planting additional street trees or paving a sidewalk where there may not be sidewalk currently and that type of thing. I hope that answers the question.
I think, so that part of it, so if we interfere with pre-existing properties or property lines, then we're going to be responsible for that. I guess we're not going to be placing development requirements on any businesses or private property owners throughout this project. It's going, if there's a project, then it's all going to be paid for by project funds.
Any increase in, in need for right-of-way would be paid for by project funds unless someone comes through to redevelop in a way that the impact of their development, their redevelopment is proportional to the amount of right-of-way needed. So the more right-of-way needed, the larger the scope of that new impact would be. Think, I mean, think in terms of the difference between impact of a, of a big box store where there was previously a small business, you know, if there's a, if there's a massive impact on the system created, then it may be proportional to require more street frontage, for example, to meet those demands.
Okay. Thank you.
Cory.
Thank you. So this is really just, as we move forward, because we're going to have more conversations about This is really just, as we move forward, because we're gonna have more conversations about this. And as I dug into this, leading up to this meeting, and I really appreciated this, the comparison of. Anticipation of how businesses will experience both construction. And then the eventual sort of benefits of the project. So I think we've been very focused on the sort of end benefits and all of that. And I think it's gonna be important for me, speaking for me, to to kind of get a better understanding. Of how we could possibly mitigate the construction challenges for businesses. Because when you think about Main Street, it's, 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 which is part of the reason it is the way it is. Is that there, there aren't ways for people to enter those businesses from the back sides. There's not, there's not a lot of like other ways to to get there, to get around it. So I think that's something that I would like to be thinking about as we move forward is. Because I see that for a lot of the businesses, when you dig in there, the, the, the potential for risk is really during the construction phase. And that's gonna be the phase coming up the quickest. On the heels of the pandemic and what a lot of the businesses have have experienced. So that's a place that I would like for us to dig in more to kind of think, how do we, how are we gonna? Really work with that?
Okay, great. I don't see any more questions. Molly, how many more slides do we have? Oh, Steve, go ahead.
I'd originally envisioned this as, as. Four-lane highway, and the only way you could reverse direction is with the roundabouts. I believe I'm now starting to understand that each street. You're able to turn down that street. Does that mean there's gonna be a left-turn lane to go down that street, like going north when, when you're going east?
Typically, yes.
Okay, so there will be a left-turn lane there.
Yes.
Okay. Big deal. And the people can turn and come back to business, come back to businesses and if they need.
Let me clarify, that left-turn lane would still have a curb. On its left edge, so that opposing traffic and it are separated. In other words, there's not an opportunity to cross that curb and enter into a driveway.
Right.
It's the left turn bay to turn into the public street.
You could turn into the street and then. Thanks.
Okay. Molly, let's keep going.
Okay.
All right, Joe, you got a question?
Yeah. Brian actually caused it, so I'll blame him. Okay, so when you, Brian, you were just, you just said to. Counselor Mo, Counselor Mo's, to Counselor Mo's statement that if we were eastbound. And wanted to go northbound onto a side street, that there would be a turn lane provided for that turn. And then. You said. Earlier that people will be able to go into any side street. So. I guess that, I guess that answers my questions in regards to Main Street traffic. But what it doesn't. Reflect that any traffic coming off any side street. Must turn right. There is no provision for any vehicle to turn off of a side street. To turn left, going, going on to Main Street, is that correct?
I understand your question and the answer is no, that is not correct. What it means is that it know, from a side street, a left turn from a side street onto Main Street. Would no longer be able to make a two-stage left turn. Using the special purpose lane as it sits today. They would have to make a single-stage left turn wherein they would enter directly from the side street to. The receiving lane on the, if we're northbound turning west. You would have to go into the westbound travel lane. You would not be able to go into the special purpose lane in the center as it exists today.
So that, okay, so then that's like the intersection that is. At where Papa's Pizza is on Main Street. So anybody coming out of the side street on the north side. Going on onto Main Street then goes around that concrete barrier that was placed there many years ago. And has to go on to Main Street. Front to make a left turn there if they wanted to go to Papa's. Is that right?
I'm not sure I tracked exactly the Papa's part of the description, but if you're on a side street and you wish to make a left turn. Presently, you can make that left turn into the center turn lane or the special purpose lane.
Right.
Then you make a, a right merging maneuver to get into the through traffic heading in the direction you intended. After a median with a curb would be installed. You could still make that left turn from Main Street onto the side street, but if you're coming out of that same side street. You would not be able to use the center area to two-stage your turn. You would have to turn directly into the receiving lane that's in the direction you wish to travel.
Okay, but I'm not sure how many folks have tried to make that turn at that intersection. I have. And it's extremely difficult. And, and pretty difficult to even time, because now if we mitigate the traffic. And have it more consistent on Main Street without having pulses. Then making those kind of turns can be, can be very problematic. Do you agree?
I, I understand what you're describing, and if you're uncomfortable or unable to make that turn, then you could make a right-hand turn from that. Side street or driveway, move up to the next left turn bay and then make a U-turn. If you had a vehicle that was. You know, a regular passenger vehicle or standard pickup size.
Right, so as opposed to a teenager make throwing a, making a hail mary turn. They're gonna have to turn right if they don't like it. So that, that is pretty interesting, because I'm wondering if we are creating a more accidents that way or about to create more accidents. Is there any data that says those, that's a safe turn?
I don't have any information to share.
Okay.
Well, can we log that as a, you know, as an issue to come back to, because I think that that question's gonna come up as we get through this and people are gonna want to.
I absolutely know it will.
Yep. And I, and so, and can we extend that? And what, could you extend that same sort of scenario to those situations? Could, because some businesses would get a left-hand turn into them, right? So if you came out of that business. The way to think about that would be like a, like a side street, that you could take a left-hand turn out of that business if you have a left-hand turn into it, right?
I think it's very situationally dependent.
Okay.
On the conditions on the ground of that business, its proximity to other intersections, whether they be roundabout signals or unsignalized and controlled. I can certainly see a situation where a left turn access into a major business would be permitted, but a left out wouldn't. Simply because you could leave that business, turn right, and then very quickly have a U-turn opportunity.
Okay, Mary Lee.
I'm, I'm willing to table, because my question was involved with the same thing. I'm looking at the next slide that says the corridor's gonna increase twenty to thirty percent in the next twenty years. And I'm looking at this left-turn element as being very cumbersome. And, and the possibility of creating even more accidents, so, but that's fine, because we'll, you table it until later, so that's all.
Molly, how many more slides do you have for tonight?
We have about four.
All right, we got about ten minutes left, so. Let's keep going.
So I think as Counselor Woodrow just noted. The risks from crashes will only increase with expected increase in traffic volumes. As Springfield and our surrounding communities continue to grow. As people travel to access businesses and other major activity centers on the corridor. In planning for Main Street's future, we're also addressing a range of ages and abilities. Main Street needs to meet a diverse range of needs and demographic shifts. Currently, Main Street is a high-stress pedestrian and bicycle environment. We also know that we have the highest transit ridership with a number of eleven buses in the LTD. Service area. Main Street Safety Project identifies infrastructure solutions. And these engineered solutions need to work hand in hand with education and enforcement. The city has both worked on producing. Educational videos and information cards and materials. Participated in various programs and events over the years, and the police department. Annually seeks grants to support increased traffic patrols to enforce speed. Seat belts and impaired and distracted driving laws. So that is all that I had. I was also just gonna mention that early in the. Planning process, we developed a draft project purpose statement. And it was refined based on feedback from the Plant Springfield Planning Commission, the City Council, and the Main Street Governance Team. It identified the problem to be solved and our basis for selecting solutions. And has been a touchstone for our public engagement efforts and the sieve through which all options that we've considered. Have needed to pass. And with that, I would turn it over to any further questions, feedback on the discussion questions that were included in the packet.
All right, does anybody have any additional questions? All right, so could you clarify the purpose statement piece? I thought the original purpose statement. The one you showed had, and maybe I'm thinking of the older one, had. Had safety improvements. I thought the original one had safety improvements and economic opportunity on it as well.
This, this does, I can pull it, I'll pull it back up. Sorry about that.
And maybe I, maybe the slide's too far away for me to read.
So it's this, this paragraph here with the, about carrying it, so it will provide for the movement of goods and people, support the economic viability of the corridor. Accommodate current bus service and future transit solutions and complement safety education and traffic enforcement.
Okay, so I guess the couple of comments that, that, that I had. One of them is I would, I would like to know more about when we think about in the implementa, in. And I know we're not gonna answer this tonight. When we think about the implementation phase, how to get more data driven by it, right? Because we still have safety data that comes out annually, right? That's gonna refine. How, you know, any improvements we do on the corridor. And it's really unclear to me how we're going to make changes and investment on the corridor, and then we're gonna come back and measure that, that result. So I think that's still kind of an opportunity for refinement. The other, the other thing that really stood out to me was, again, as we get through, is if you compare the two sides of the presentation from. A. From the safety picture to the economic, to the economic picture, just getting more. Clear on where the economic benefit is or how we measure the economic benefit, I think will, will help a lot. And it could be in the presentations, it could be in the additional material, but that's not something that, that, that we saw in the slides. Last point that I would like to make. Are these slides gonna go up on the, on the webpage?
Uh, we can do that.
Yeah, that, yeah, if you could send out a copy, because I know that they didn't make the original packet. And make sure that they get up on the Main Street website. I'd appreciate it. Mary Lee.
Uh, one part of a conversation we didn't necessarily have. Uh, in our, in tonight was the consideration of biking and walking. We talked about injury, injury crashes, vehicle crashes. Damage, property damage and all that kind of thing, but we did not talk about the usage of Main Street by pedestrians and bikes. I would like to see some basic data on. On even just the usage frequency. Bicycles on Main Street. I'd like to see some data on pedestrian usage. I mean, I, I just, I don't know how, I, I'm not. Educated enough to know how to get that, but I think that kind of data is important to have. As far as frequency of usage, frequency of, I, I, the reason I ask is because I'm on Main Street all the time, back and forth because of where my ward is. And I see very little traffic from pedestrians and bicycles on Main Street. And maybe there's a reason they're not there is because they, they, it's too stressful for them. But I, we still need a number, we still need some kind of data. This part, that's part of the basis, the foundation for all this.
We can, we can definitely get some more information on that. I, what I was flipping to is something that I neglected to mention. When we were talking about how the percentage of rear-end and turning movement crashes stayed relatively the same between the two different data sets. We did see an increase in both pedestrian and bicycle crashes percentage-wise. Between the two data sets. Is that because more people are using it because of the improvements or not? It is hard to say, but.
Do we have a, in that, when you're talking to percentages. Do we have a significant number? Do we have a significant factor? Like, if, if think, if there's a one percent increase. Do we really know that? Or do we know, is there a percentage, a play, a playful percentage in between those numbers?
Well, so Brian, I would ask you to do some math in your head. If these are, if these are the two data sets, and this is average per year, it's not the total. What, we can get back to you on what those numbers are, given the percentages, but.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for taking us through that. I know we're gonna spend a little bit of time on this over the next month. But you know, if you, if you can continue to put out just any, any additional information that you guys find, you know, and get it back to us, I would definitely appreciate it. And we will see you next week. With that, I'm going to adjourn us for the next four minutes. With that, I'm going to adjourn us for the next four minutes. All right, I'm going to call the city council regular meeting to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow.
Here.
Councillor Pictionary.
I'm here, thank you.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chambers and give them to the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak to either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of the public testimony is as follows. Anyone, anyone in person in the council chambers and then anyone who has raised their virtual hand. Neil, how many people are joining us this evening?
Mayor, we have approximately thirty participants online and about thirteen here in the council chambers.
All right. First item, please.
Mayor, you have two items under Springfield upbeat. Item number one is the mayor's recognition LGBTQ plus Pride Month proclamation.
All right, and I've got whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. Whereas for more than fifty years, June has been celebrated as LGBTQ plus Pride Month nationwide in the honor of the LGBTQ plus citizens that rose up to fight discriminatory laws at places like Stonewall. Whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence and hatred based on race, ethnicity, religion, class, gender, identity, sexual orientation, age, mental or physical disabilities, and to be supported by their peers, educators and community leaders. And whereas Springfield, Oregon celebrates and honors its diverse LGBTQ plus community that includes people of all races, ethnicities, religions and professions. And whereas the city of Springfield strives to be a community where everyone is celebrated for our differences rather than limited by what might divide us, I Sean Van Gordon, Mayor of Spring, the city of Springfield proclaim June twenty twenty-two to be LGBTQ plus Pride Month in recognition and celebration of the many ways in which the history and the culture of LGBTQ plus Americans and their advancements, discoveries and achievements of these Americans have contributed to the history, culture and social fabric of this nation and the city of Springfield.
Mayor, your next proclamation is Men's Health Month proclamation.
So whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women with Native American and African American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas encouraging safe behaviors, including social distancing and getting a vaccine will help spread, stop the spread of COVID. And whereas men who are educated about the value that preventative healthcare can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive mem- family members will be more likely to participate in health screenings. Whereas fathers who stay connected to their children, maintain and maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and have happier and more fulfilled lives. Whereas Men's Health Month will focus on broad ranges of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, prostate, testicular and colon cancer. And whereas the citizens of Springfield, Oregon are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of healthy lifestyle, regular exercise and medical checkups. I Sean Van Gordon, the mayor of Springfield, do here ca- to hereby proclaim June is Men Health, Men's Health Month in the city and encourage all of our citizens to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is the consent calendar.
I make a motion that, uh, lost it here, approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved in second in that we approve the consent calendar. Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Councillor Pitts.
Aye.
Councillor Mo.
Yes.
Councillor Rodley.
Yes.
Councillor Stare.
Yes.
Councillor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Our motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Mayor, tonight you have two public hearings. Uh, public hearing number one is annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annex two point three three acres of property located southeast of the intersection of Holly Street and South Forty-Ninth Street and north of Jasper Road. Portion of map eighteen dash zero two dash zero four dash zero zero, tax like twenty eight hun- tax lot twenty eight hundred. Again, this is ordinance number two, an ordinance annexing certain territory located southeast of the intersection of Holly Street and South Forty-Ninth Street and north of Jasper Road to the city of Springfield. While Amalane Park and Recreation District withdrawing the same territory from the Willikenzie Rural Fire Protection District, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. Uh, this is a first reading and Andy Limbert is here for the staff report.
Yes, good evening councillors. I'm just going to share my screen to provide some maps for context here. Just bear with me. I'm going to bring up the site on PowerPoint. And we'll start it from the beginning. Um, I just wanted to clarify at the outset. It, it was my oversight, I apologize. This is located just southeast of the intersection of South Forty-Ninth Place, not South Forty-Ninth Street, South Forty-Ninth Place. So with the next version of the ordinance, uh, to come before you, that typo will be corrected. Um, but it is located in southeast Springfield, uh, just south of the Phase One area of Woodland Ridge, which is a new subdivision, uh, between Jasper Road and Daisy Street. And the annexation area is an irregular shaped portion of of an existing vacant pasture, essentially. Um, the reason for the annexation request is that it comprises part of the boundary of the next subdivision phase that's being proposed. The applicant does not own all of the property. Um, the applicant being Hayden Holmes, the developer of Woodland Ridge. And you can see some of the development to the north of this site off Squirrel Street and South Fifty First Place. Um, so the annexation area is depicted on the subdivision plan before you. And so it forms the outer boundary of the Phase Three subdivision area. The reason for the annexation request is to allow for extension of Holly Street eastward from its current terminus, uh, which is at the intersection with South Forty-Ninth Place. Um, and that will serve, um, as one of the primary through streets for this neighborhood. It will eventually connect with an existing segment of Holly Street in the Pinehurst neighborhood, which is east of this property. So we'll, uh, provide for continuity and co- and connectivity, uh, within these neighborhoods as they develop. Um, the other purpose for this, um, annexation area does allow for some residential lots to be developed. And you can see them in kind of the south portion of that, they're numbered there. Uh, there also will be some utilities. There's a connection point to the Jasper Trunk Sewer at this location and also proposed stormwater facilities. Um, because of the public improvements that are going to be provided in these areas, um, the annexation request is being submitted by the developer and that will allow for completion of this initial subdivision phase. Uh, staff did beat all of the notification requirements for this. Uh, we posted the site, provided three signs on the perimeter, one, um, where Holly Street ends, one actually right along the fence line, um, off Jasper Road. And then also another one at South for Fifty First Place, which is the nearest kind of point of of connection, um, to the annexation area to the north where people who are notified of the annexation might, um, view it. I did have a couple of emails. People were asking about the fate of the trees as a wooded ridgeline along this, um, this area of Springfield. Um, most of the trees will be retained intact as common open space. There will be an extension of South Fifty First Place as a necessary connection to provide access to the neighborhood as it develops. Um, so that will essentially create a gap in that tree line, uh, to facilitate development of the subdivision. That will connect to the north in the existing Woodland Ridge area and the west in West Winds. Um, and the annexation area that's roughly half of an arrowhead, I guess you could say, um, is on the south boundary of the subdivision phase. There were no other letters, uh, no expressions of concern or objection to this annexation request. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Joe.
Yes, thank you. Hey, Andy, could you, to, to put this in context for me as well? Would you indicate with your cursor where the, and I'm looking on the, um, paid, attachment to page four thirty-six. Can you please show me with using your cursor where the rail line is?
Uh, the rail line runs in this right away, right along the edge of this city limits line. So it actually, there's a, there's a little kind of a wedge here and Jasper Road departs, they were, they run in parallel to the southeast of here. The railroad continues along this, the boundary of this property and Jasper Road diverges and it, and it, and it goes on a more westerly direction. So there's a little sliver of land in between and then the right aways kind of connect right at this point.
So is that, do we have provisions in code or, or, um, I'm not completely sure. I'm trying also, I know what you're talking about now, so thanks. Do we, that's going to be a more concentrated residential area and I'm, and I just don't know. Do we have, again, provisions within the code to have some barriers that'll help keep kids off that track?
Um, yeah, that's a good question. Typically.
I know they've had fencing and I know they've had security borders, et cetera, that help provide protection. But as they are developing a heck out of this area, I haven't, um, seen if that's been addressed in your paperwork.
Um, we, we don't have that at this point, um, because the development has not come through yet. Um, but one of the things that is an option is to fence off, uh, some of the areas that will be devoted to um, stormwater facilities, uh, which is in much of the area of, it's called Track C. Um, so this area, there's the opportunity to fence the boundary between, and if there's an existing fence right now, but it's a barbed wire, you know, like a livestock type fence. Um, so there may be the opportunity to change the style of fencing along the boundary of this property, uh, to something that's more, I guess, residential or urban in nature, like a chain link fence or something. Um, that would essentially be something that the, the developer, uh, would need to initiate. Um, it, we don't have, to my knowledge, a consistent fencing strategy um, along the railroad, uh, to keep people off. It's, I guess, depends on, you know, as, as properties develop, what the ownership, basically incentive is to do that.
Again, I think you'll have to agree that we've seen a lot of development pushing, pushing south on our city limits towards that railway. And I think it's, uh, uh, it may be too late in some cases, but I think it's worth at least, um, considering that and, and, you know, food for thought, maybe planting a seed with you to see if uh, it would be wise for us to look at that because again, if it's predictable, it's preventable.
Sure, absolutely. There will not be public, um, you know, pedestrian connections or formal connections that will empty out into this area. Um, in fact, some of the area is wet, so it'll be a sign of a distant, bit of a disincentive for people to make their way across, you know, what is going to be retained mostly as kind of wetlands. And there's some, there's actually a ditch, um, along this area that, that drains the, the area and that's going to be kept. So there may not be physical barriers that may, we may be able to keep some of the natural barriers to encourage people to remain, you know, on the public sidewalks and not venture onto the railway corridor, um, which poses a significant risk. And Jasper Road too, um, also pose a risk, so. Um, but staff will work with the developer, obviously, uh, to, we'll take that under advisement and let them know that, um, that, that is a concern.
Thank you, Eddie.
All right. Any other questions? Leonard.
Um, Andy, I don't know if you can see me, but I'm, uh, I'm, I'm going to indicate part of this street that's part of the annex, uh, proposed annexation area. This, uh, this street right here, the, it's, it appears that I, the the post annexation area makes perfect sense, but it looks like part of this street is currently part of the city. And then when it goes down, is this brightly, um, that it's no longer, it's no longer in the city. So if we, i- if, if part of this street needed repairs, uh, it could conceivably be partly in and partly out.
That's correct. Yeah, that was the reason for the annexation. It, it just so happens that the way that the developer has designed the subdivision, a portion of the existing city limits line, and you can see it here where the city limits line runs east-west across this vacant property. Um, and then it, it articulates around, uh, what used to be a, a former home site there. But it's along more or less the center line of the proposed street. And you're correct, uh, Councillor Stare, that is not a desirable situation to have a split jurisdiction um, across the street. So staff had advised the developer that would be in their interest to annex this area in order to bring the entire segment of Holly Street into the city limits, um, as well as some of the future improvements in the area that I'm showing. It says, the text says proposed annexation area. There's some stormwater facilities planned, uh, that'll be constructed and then would be eventually in public ownership. That also is desirable to have that within the city limits. Um, should the rest of the development area to the east not annex or not proceed, all of the built area, uh, within the subdivision phase will be within the incorporated city limits with this action.
Yeah, it, it just seemed like an unusual situation. Okay, thanks.
It is, um, so I guess for context, um, it would be preferable to have the entire area annexed. Uh, that is a bit of a heavy lift though, because, um, annexation fees are calculated on acreage. And so, um, it is a, a fairly significant amount of application fees and complexity for surveying and that sort of thing to get the thirty-plus acres remaining, um, annexed to the city. And then they will remain vacant for a period of time while the developer, you know, that it advances towards that, um, annexed area. So the developer chose to annex just the portion that was needed for, I guess, the immediate future and leave the remainder for another day. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't have any cards, um, for this item. Neil, do you have any hands?
Mayor, it appears we have no hands for this item.
All right. Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, this is no action required, it's first reading only. So next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is the transient lodge tax administration. This is ordinance number three and ordinance amending Springfield Municipal Code, section seven point seven zero zero to seven point seven two four, seven point seven two eight, seven point seven three two and seven point seven three six and repealing section seven point seven two six, seven point seven three zero, seven point seven three four and seven point seven three eight regarding transient lodging tax. This is a first reading and Nathan Bell is here for the staff report.
All right. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the item in front of you this evening is a request, um, to, uh, conduct a public hearing and a first reading on ordinance, uh, that amends sections of the city's municipal code relating to, uh, transient lodging tax. And just some quick background on this, back in January of the city of Eugene notified its partners that it was getting out of the business of administering the Back in January of the City of Eugene notified its partners that it was getting out of the business of administering the T L T program. Um, and, um, was going to have the state administer their program. Uh, we were given the option of joining them or coming together with the remaining partners and having someone step up and administer that program. Uh, it was an easy solution for us, uh, losing the economy of scale, um, from having City of Eugene as part of that. And the fact that the state can provide that service, a better service at a lesser cost, uh, we are recommending that you go with the state as well. Uh, to facilitate the state, um, performing that role for us, uh, our municipal code regarding T L T. Has to be consistent with the state's model T L T ordinance and that's what these amendments accomplish. Uh, so with that, uh, any questions?
Are there any questions? All right, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, Joe.
Thanks, sir. Of course I have one. Um, hey, Nathan, is this, um. Tax collector, so to speak, is it changing any of the rate of costs? Born on to the people, for example, that are, that are renting out? Is there going to be additional cost to them as opposed to the same rate that Eugene charges?
That's a good question. I, I don't believe so, but I can double check and follow up with the answer if that's the case. Uh, if it does, it's, it's going to be a negligible expense. Uh, so I think the state, uh, the reason they can provide this at a lesser cost. Is just the economy of scale is they're going to be performing this whole thing for most, um, agencies across the state.
Right, no, I, I, I don't have any doubt about that part, but they cur, they kind of like charge four point five percent of the, of the cost of the rent to going towards transit. Room tax and I just didn't know if this provider is being allowed by way of state law or by way of city code or whatever. Being permitted to charge more than what the renters in this area were currently paying.
So I think Christina has an answer.
The, the tax rate is not changing. The city will still set the tax rate and be in control of the tax rate. What is changing is the amount. That the tax administrator keeps of that tax as a cost for administering the tax. So there should be. No change to the tax rate that is collected. Um, it's just a change on what the city receives back, um, to be more. The enforcement will go through the state of Oregon and so there could be minor changes. Related to enforcement or filing of those taxes and so incremental or minor cost to business. As just a cost of compliance with the law, there could be small changes there. Um, and that's probably what we could follow up with to get an idea of what those differences would be.
Okay, thank you. Sounds good.
Any other questions? All right, I am going to open the public hearing. I do not have any cards for this item. Neil, do we have any hands for this item?
Mayor, no hands for this item.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, this is no action requested. It's first reading only. Uh, next item, please.
Next is business from the audience.
All right. I have three cards, um, from inside the, uh, inside city hall. First person is Steve Swift. If you can come up and give, state your name and general location for the record.
Yes, uh, Steve Swift, uh, six, five, six, Laxan and Loop. So, um, the first thing I'm going to say is, um. Since you first instituted the, uh, proposal of the roundabouts. I conducted an impromptu survey with all my customers and I posed the question, uh. Uh, what percentage of, uh, drivers, uh, follow the speed limit? And, uh, it was all overwhelming, uh, none. So I'm going to pose the same question to each of the council members. Also, one other question is, um. Uh, do you know what the number one cause of accidents are? And, um, the last one is, um, shoot, um. Uh, that, that last one escaped me, uh, I'm not used to, uh, coming up there, but, uh. But yeah, so, uh, uh, what your individual, um, take on percentage of drivers? Uh, not just on Main Street, but overall. And, um, and oh, and do you think the best prevention? Um, of, uh, people breaking the law is enforcement? That's what I posed to you.
All right, thank you. Aloha, Aloha Heart. We don't normally respond in this, in, in this environment. We'll get to a point where if people want to respond, they will, uh. They will make some comments to it. Right now, we're just receiving public comment. Aloha Heart.
Hey, tonight I'm here on a happy subject. I am here to just give such deep and high appreciation from the bottom of my heart. To everyone who works at this library here in Springfield. This Springfield library is, is superior to any library that I have ever. Been a part of in any city I've lived in and I've lived in several cities during the, during the course of my time when my kids were little. And now they're in their fifties, so it's a long time. I really appreciate the inclusiveness, the creativity, the commitment. The amazing programs that every single staff member of our library puts together and for me. The Springfield Library is one of the highlights and golden shiny. Stars of this whole community and I just want to thank them publicly. And encourage our city who does budget. Real, uh, allocation to remember to really please support our library. It is vital to this community. Thank you.
And you come also add your name and general location.
My name, Aloha Heart and I am a resident of Springfield and happy to be especially because of the library.
Thank you. Uh, Victoria Doyle.
Hi, my name is Victoria Doyle, seven eighty seven, South Forty Eighth Street in Springfield. And I was at home listening to the, um, first portion of the meeting and it, um, it was about the levy, the police levy we talked about. And I know it's probably too late now to make any changes with budgeting and everything happening, but I'd like to see maybe in the future that the council consider. Moving those F T Es from that levy and getting them more in the general fund. I mean, we're talking about a levy that. Yes, it's been approved, but it doesn't mean that it's going to be approved, right? And so by doing that, we're tying people's lives and livelihood. To, uh, a levy and a, and a potential vote or not vote. So I think that it would be more beneficial that we tie. People's, um, jobs to our general fund and not to that levy. And that that levy emphasized more about the fact that it's keeping our jail open and that it, um, benefits the folks and how those numbers have. You know, the crime has been reduced in downtown and everything since that jail opened and that that be more of our focus. And just kind of get those jobs out and away from the levy. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last card I had from in, inside, uh, city hall. Um, Neil, do we have anybody that wants to testify remotely?
Yes, mayor, the first speaker is Kevin Shaper. Kevin will be followed by Danny Wright. And Kevin, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi, uh, my name is Kevin Shaper and I live in Ward Two. Uh, I, I want to touch on both parts of the work session tonight. Uh, with regard to the, the property crime statistics, uh, I looked at the FBI crime data explorer and it shows a thirty seven percent. Decline in property crime from two thousand nine to, to twenty twenty rather than the fifty percent given by staff. Uh, so I'd be interested to understand how that's calculated. Also, looking at the bigger picture, scaling that out across a larger time span. I see that before the jails built, there was an even larger drop in property crimes. So from nineteen ninety seven to two thousand nine, it dropped by fifty two percent. So it appears to me that the property crime drop has been part of a long-term decline since the late nineteen nineties. And I wonder if your staff would share the data sources, um, and any methodology that leads to this cause of any kind of causal inference about the jail. And then, uh, I want to thank staff for a great job on, uh, presenting on Main Street. Uh, with regards to the number of people biking and walking, there, uh, a couple of things I wanted to mention for consideration. First. Is the number eleven bus is one of the busiest routes in the L T D system and anyone who makes a round trip using this bus line has to cross Main Street as a pedestrian. Because the second half of your trip will always be on the opposite side of the street. And to underscore the significance of this, I want to note that that's exactly how seventeen year old Sherry Faro was killed in two thousand nine. Crossing the street to go home after getting off the bus. Uh, second is an analogy. Uh, it'd be great to have a, a bridge from Clearwater Park to Mount Piscata and it would be. Such a huge time savings for everyone's Springfield. It's so easy and convenient and safe, but we'd never justify the need for a bridge based on counting how many people are currently swimming across the river. Nobody swims across, but obviously a lot of people would use the bridge and the same feels necessarily true about Main Street to me. If people. Felt safe doing so, they would, they would obviously be riding a bike on a summer evening to go shake at Finn's Drive-In and that's economic development. Um, finally, uh, I just wanted to ask what's the Main Street Safety Plan will be doing? To reduce the number of driveways on Main Street, which, uh, as we saw in the presentation tonight, is obviously a huge outlier at the statewide level. Thank you.
The next speaker is Danny Wright and Danny, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hello, this is Danny Wright from McKinsey Feed, forty four, forty one Main Street in Springfield. I live at eight, eight, two, seven, eight Milliken Road out in Malterville. And I just wanted to thank the staff for, you know, opening up the discussion, uh, about the Main Street Safety Plan. And encourage, um. The council to look at each volume that has been set out there for them. And from my understanding, there is a set of drawings that visualize what Main Street is supposed to look like. When this plan is done and I'd encourage you to get ahold of staff and have that presented to you. Um, the, having every street have a ax, a, a free access point to it. Does not, is not in the plan, has never been discussed. Uh, I was surprised to hear that. That was an option because there's many side streets that are very close together. So how long would that? Median be if that was taken into account? Um, and I appreciate that. Each councillor has experience driving and doing different things. Um, in and about Main Street and up and down Main Street and I would encourage you to ride the bus, take a bike, walk. Um, use the different means of traveling down Main Street and think about how you would access your. Business that you like to go to as, if it was going to take you. Seven roundabouts to get there and seven minutes longer to get there, would you do it or would you choose to order from Amazon? And just think about what would happen to Main Street if forty to sixty percent of the six hundred businesses. That are on Main are gone. And it becomes a ghost town because it's too hard to get to. So thank you.
Mayor, no other hands for business from the audience.
All right, then I will open it up for council response if anybody, Leonard.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Steve Swift and, uh, Aloha Heart. I love the library too. Um, that I. You're looking at a bunch of library fans up here. Um, Victoria Doyle, thank you. Um, Steve, uh, Kevin Shaper, uh, made some great points and, uh. Danny Wright, um, I, uh, I, I think you're making good points as well. Just about the difficulty of visualizing what this is going to look like and I'm sure that there are going to be modifications before this is done and, um. I, I would certainly advocate for as many visual aids as we can get. That's all.
All right, we, do we, did we have one more last minute hand? Did I close it too quick?
Mayor, just as you were closing, one last hand came up, so just wanted to make you aware of that.
If they're still available, let's give them a chance. We still got time.
Okay, our next speaker is S J Lore and S J, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, um, I just wanted to kind of chime in with, we're huge library fans as well. And anytime there's opportunity to bring up the library and how wonderful they are. Um, I'm all for that. So I just wanted to kind of second that. And then also someone spoke earlier in regards to a bridge, you know, with. Connecting Clearwater to Mount Piscata. Um, I had never heard of any such thing before and. That would be something that would be extremely wonderful. Um, if there's something like that, holy crap, have we been missing out? Uh, I just know that our family would utilize that, uh, multiple times a week if that was something that was available because we frequent Clearwater. And the Jasper Trailhead area and we love it. So I just wanted to share that with you guys that to us, that's something that's important and if that's a possibility in the future. Uh, sign us up because we'll advocate for that a hundred percent. That's a great idea.
Uh, S J, could you, could you list your name and location in the city for the record?
Yes, uh, S J Lore and we're in Ward Four.
Thank you. All right, any other council response? Uh, the, the two elements that, that, that I had in, in S J, I think Kevin, I don't think Kevin was referring to an actual project. I think he was, uh, using that as a parable or a, you know, a metaphor for, uh, uh, for, for an issue. But could somebody from the staff follow up about the question for, uh, about, from Danny Wright about the drawings? Um, and if, if they do exist, you know, if they, if you could share them with the, uh, with the council and then put them in the packet for next week, please. All right. Next item, please.
Next item is any business from the city council.
Any additional business, Steve?
I was going to say, over the, over the years, I've come to council meetings and we get very, very few. People coming in here and watching the meetings, which I interpret that as we're doing a good job, so, so they leave us, leave us alone as councillors, but. I've, I've always felt that more people should, should observe the council meetings, so. There was a time when Springfield considered going, going video and the expense, didn't want to do that, so they didn't. Now, after COVID, we're on video now. We've got thirty people online tonight. That is fantastic. I want, want the public to participate. I want them to watch us. I want them to know what's going on. I want them to ask questions. We're there for them.
Steve, do you want to maybe talk about that little thing that happened in Glenwood today before we, uh?
Operacy that were there.
I heard it was like thirty people watching a hole being dug in the grounds.
Well, it was already dug.
Yeah, well, on, on the, uh, uh, west side of Glenwood, uh, where the hotels are. Uh, the city put in a welcome to Springfield sign, big one, beautiful one and good crowd there and, uh. It's, uh. And I've been af- after recognition like that for a long time and, and I thank us for doing that. It's about time and Corey was there.
Yeah, and, uh, Corey, you want to?
I do. Um, first of all, the sign's beautiful. Urban Love and Lumber Company did the sign for us so that now we're. We're bookended both in Thurston and Glenwood, which I think is fantastic. And because they're my people, I just want to call out to the D P W folks who pre-dug the holes and we all got to like. See how hard that was and we're there to like, get everything on the level. So it's, it's exciting, I think, to, to have nice things. So, yeah.
Yeah, it, it was, it was a fantastic event. Thank you Public Works for helping to set that up and to have it match. What we see on the Thurston side, you know, just made it extra special, especially with the, uh. World Championships coming in and just to put kind of a line in the sand that when you get into Glenwood, you are in Springfield. Um, it's the small things that help. All right, Joe.
And I'd like to, not like to, but unfortunately I'd like to pop a bunch of balloons here that the sign's already been tagged, so we'd need to probably look at. Fixing it or fencing it or something, but there you go.
It was one of the first things I mentioned as we put it up, that it's going to be a potential target. I don't know what to do about it. I don't like that, but you're, you're right.
Leonard.
Um, I, I just wanted to go on record on how stoked I am that we've got a hometown baseball team now. Um, you know, I, uh, you know, the, uh, and, um, uh, our mayor was out to throw out the first pitch and, um, the. Drifters, um, you got a lifelong fan in me, that's for sure. I mean, let's, uh, let, let, let's get out there and support them.
Well, and, um, if you haven't noticed, uh, their, their cost point for tickets, I think they were shooting for six dollars a ticket is really. Well, and if you haven't noticed, their their cost point for tickets, I think they were shooting for six dollars a ticket is really reasonable for to take the family to. All right, anything else? All right, next item, please.
Next item is business from the city manager. Item number one is Springfield Heritage Award Program Proposal from the Historic Commission in collaboration with the Springfield History Museum Committee. And Melissa Corino is here for the staff report.
Hi there. Sorry, my, are you waiting for me? This is Melissa.
Yes, we are.
Apologies, I my signal went out for a little bit. But yes, I think you all have the information in front of you for the Heritage Awards Program Proposal. And I believe the mayor has additional talking points as well. But I'm here to answer any questions if they come up.
Um, could you just give us a brief kind of overview about where this came from and a kind of a the high level summary?
Sure thing. And yes, so in collaboration with the History Museum, the Historic Commission dreamed of these heritage awards many, many years ago and just recently was able to really detail some of the criteria, the nomination process and the selections process. There is an award subcommittee made up of members of both the Historic Commission and the Springfield History Museum. And there are two awards. There's a preservation award and the history history maker award. So and it's supposed to be very inclusive where you know, it's people who have made an impact in the past or are making an impact now, and that will be making history. I think that's a high level view of the awards program.
Great, thank you. Any any questions about this? I think we're giving the head nod tonight to go forward and let them work on this as a pilot project. I'm seeing some head nods. I was excited about this. It's always good to find different ways to recognize and tell the story of the city. And I'm eager to see what 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 comes out of it. So I think you've got the head nod that we're interested. Definitely come back and and give us more information when it gets a gets a little bit closer.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Any other business from the city manager?
No further business. Thank you.
A business from the city attorney. We have one item, adoption of city council operating policies and procedures. Christina Kraz is here for the report.
Hello, City Council, I'm here for Mary Bridget Smith today, and this is following up on direction the council provided on May second regarding updates to your council operating policies and procedures. There, I want to note a couple of changes mentioned in the AIS regarding the attendance and public participation to reflect how you have been conducting virtual meetings. More flexibility for the city manager to provide security at city council meetings. And public official ethics and non discrimination statutes are now referenced in the types of laws the council is responsible for observing. And then we have also added a new section addressing council vacancies and the section differs from the previous version because it adds an exception for situations where a counselor elect could be appointed to fill a vacancy. For example, if someone on the council were to were to vacate their position right after a May primary, for example, and there's a significant amount of time before they would take office. But they have been elected, the council could decide to appoint a counselor elect to fill a vacancy in that situation as opposed to doing the other type of setting a process for recruitment that's referenced. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. This is a project that Mary Bridget has primarily worked on, although I have assisted her. And if I cannot answer a question, we could bring this back to you potentially at another another date, or you could adopt but ask for question, you know, answers to questions following adoption, that would also be an option.
Merrily.
I think this is something the council visionary brought up before, and I couldn't remember the exact amounts. But the the part in there that talks about the condolences and it gives a fifty dollar limit. And I was I was thinking a hundred. And 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 that that would be a better it's it just says not to exceed a hundred. It doesn't mean we have to spend a hundred. This is act to exceed it. When you're talking, as Joe mentioned before, when you're talking flowers or a flower arrangement, fifty dollars nowadays doesn't doesn't cut it that well. And so if we could change that to be not exceeding a hundred dollars for those floor arrangements or those things that we would do for condolences. That I think I'm agreeing with Joe from before. I think that would be good.
I believe that number may be related to the gift exception to public ethics rules. And so to the extent that a community member may also be a pub, another public official, such as a city councilor or city employee who may have suffered a loss, we may need to have two different get two different limits for community members who are not public employees and those who are. So I think that is probably the reason that it is fifty dollars in there. Would the council be interested in setting two different dollar amounts, keeping it at fifty or adopting it at fifty now and following up with additional information for future updates?
I I personally would rather go to a hundred or else have two categories. If there if it ends, I mean, because most of the time it's not usually a public official that would you would end up in a gift situation. It's a family, a spouse or a family member or something like that. So for the condolence condolence, so so if it needs to be to fit the X ethics, I'd rather see two categories.
I could, we could revise that to an amount not to exceed a hundred dollars or as may be limited under Oregon Government Ethics Law.
Sure.
And then if the law were to change, for example, or if the law wasn't relevant, it would be a hundred dollars.
That that works. That that's I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay, Damian.
Hi, uh, so I guess my biggest points of contention have to do with the boards, commissions, committees and task force. I just don't think the way that we operate is very equitable now. I think there's some things that need to be completely redone and redefined. For example, the application. You know, some people will you know, add a couple of pages while others will focus on just what's, you know, allowed. And so we need to change the application and we need to be very clear on, hey, we only write in this document, you don't add anything, or if we do, we allow everybody to do so. I think we need to redefine the council liaison role, the role of the chair, the role of the person, I mean, the staff member who is assigned because we're asking these people to give time. But why? Also figure out a way, because I think there's a lot of working in silos when it comes to these boards and commissions. And I don't know if there's really any meeting point where all the chairs come together and talk about how one hand washes the other. It just seems that we're operating in silos. And so honestly, we could spend a couple of work sessions just on reformatting the whole purpose and the operations of the boards and commissions, because I just don't think that they're working and also don't think that we're going to attract the best and the brightest. We're going to get the same type of demographics and we're going to stay in this rut. We're only attracting people who are comfortable here. We're putting too much weight on some people and not others, and we need to, man, we need to burn and start over.
Leonard.
Oh, okay. I was just sort of taking what Counselor Pitt said. I my my question is about the timeframe specifically that the council would have discretion to appoint a counselor after the May election. Is there any specific timeframe that we would be able to do? I guess this would be a question for Christina.
Let me go back to that section. Sorry, I so the there is no specific timeline proposed for action in section two point three of the operating policies and procedures.
But but it would be presumably between Election Day and the end of the year when you would be taking office.
Correct. That's the that's the assumption that once someone is certified as a counselor, sort of the once AJ, the city recorder certifies their nomination as a counselor elect, then the council could appoint that person to the remainder of the term sometime before they would otherwise take office.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, Steve, I think we need a motion.
Have we modified the motion?
I can share screen if the council would like to. Let me just share this real quick.
I don't mind making the motion. I just want to make sure I'm doing the right thing.
Hundred bucks, right?
Well, yeah, we've changed it, correct?
Yeah.
So you could move to adopt the council operating policies and procedures with the change to section eight point seven.
Okay, I make a motion and we adopt the the suggestions a hundred dollars and I made a motion that we adopt.
Is there is there a second?
I'll second it.
And Christina, was was that enough? Or do we need to rephrase that?
I think that's I'm understanding the motion to be to change it to a hundred dollars as I'm sharing on my screen right now. If that's correct, then I think that with that clarification being on the record and the reporting for this meeting, then that is fine.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Sorry, I have a have a question. So are we saying that this is the only change that we're making or we're just voting on this specific piece?
So the motion would be to adopt the draft documents that we have with with this specific change included. And I know you've got a question about about working on boards and commissions. If we could put a pin in that one and then come back to it, because I think they're so they're tangential to each other.
Okay, so I'm still, so I mean, I'm still confused because I don't want to approve it unless we make other changes because I mean, this is a very long document. And so but I'm okay with this piece here. And so I don't want to approve the whole document. So I'm going to say no.
Okay.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Rodley?
No.
Counselor Stare?
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow?
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary?
Yes, thank you.
All right, motion passes for yeses to two nays. So I
I I I just did want to clarify that there will be a another discussion over the the process of appointments. Is is that correct?
So I think we've got two separate questions going on. There's not a there is there's not another planned discussion about appointments for vacancies. I think we've put that to sort of put that one to bed. Unless.
Okay, well, I I was voting, I I was voting yes with the understanding that we were going to have further discussion on it. All right.
All right, so are you looking for further discussion tonight? And I don't know if Christina or Neil, we can we can.
I I wasn't talking about in this session. I was just talking about in another session.
Okay, so let's so let's I think let's move on to that question. So are
Mayor, what was the vote count? I'm sorry, I missed it. This one does need to pass by two thirds majority.
I had four yeses, no's.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, so is there another question that's specific to vacancies? Because I think Damian's got a good question that we we may want to come back to here in a second.
You you're talking about in this session?
Well, about scheduling more time to talk about the the committee issue that that he's brought up. But I I'm trying to figure out if you have a different issue than.
No, I I'm I'm talking about the issue the Counselor Pitts brought up. Okay, I think we should do it.
Okay, so I think, yeah, so we're not planning on coming back to any any sort of a conversation about vacancy processes related to filling sort of elected roles. Right now, I think the conversation that I hear Damian wanting to do is to get get into a broader conversations about boards, committees and everybody's sort of roles, right? Do I have that right, Damian?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think the bet we got kind of two process, we got two two paths here, and I'm going to kind of look to see what you guys want to do. I know I know this is an issue for Counselor Rodley as well. So we can do, we can schedule time in the fall because we set this out as part of our as part of our goal setting session, and we just have to find time to get it done. Or what we can do is we've used a subcommittee in the past to sort of make a package of recommendations and do the longer work and then come back and talk about talk about it to the broader to the broader council. I'm open to doing it either way. But we're we the conversation that Damian's describing is probably at least an hour to to find a spot for it. And I want to make sure we don't walk past it. Anybody have an opinion here?
We do both, like a hybrid of both. Like if we have a subcommittee and then bring it back for at least half a work session.
Yeah, I mean, we we definitely can like, because I think it's roles, it's applications, it's, you know, the appointment process. Merrily.
Yeah, I think I think it needs to be done in two two different parts. Because I think it needs to start out with an understanding of how how it exists now. And what is it that that doesn't seem to fit right or doesn't seem to work right? And and how would we want it? How do we want it to look? And how what kind of changes would we want to make? And I see, I think that needs to be a two part process.
Okay, so I'm going to take this back and Steve and I will work on it. So Steve and I can take the getting finding time in in the fall to schedule it. Nancy's writing notes for us right now for agenda review. I think I kind of need to know who's interested in doing extra subcommittee work about it. If you're.
I'm interested.
I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
I volunteer Damian, but.
He brought up the.
I vote for I vote for Damian also.
Yeah, get me for six more months, so.
His his idea, his time.
Yeah. Little known fact, Joe, Damian was bringing pizza to this.
What time is the meeting?
It's all right. So I have Corey, Joe, Joe, Leonard and Damian interested in the subcommittee. Let us work on it a little bit and then we'll we'll be in contact with folks. But that way, we don't lose this conversation. I know there's been a lot of interest in it and people wanting to have it for 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 twenty twenty two. All right, any other questions about this? Very good. Any other items, Neil?
Any other business from the city attorney?
No more business. Thank you.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.